That was not edited at all. Oh no, that was not edited. No, no, it was, it was raw.
So March of the Dead.
Which you find back of the Sunday.
Yeah, it's crazy.
You need to address the commission?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. You don't have to.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Y'all haven't noticed yet, did you?
Nah.
Okay, so that I knew.
You're more on the home.
He's at Mount Zion, I thought they were.
That's my home.
He's there on the fourth avenue.
Greg Johnson.
Yeah, I do.
Hey, that's more of me.
Yes.
You do.
So far.
So far.
So far.
Well, alright.
Y'all don't tell, y'all don't know.
Just still waiting.
Alright, yeah. They had.
Yes ma'am. I'm just being patient.
Okay, alright, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Patience is a virtue.
Patience is a virtue. I understand that it's coming today.
You should.
I'ma go up there.
You can think about your radio and things.
Yeah.
Do that. Yeah, stop. So I just want to understand this, that we don't want to. Two, three. We can be tapped. Two. I'm like, I misunderstood. It was on the. The email. Maybe, I, I think, who am I? Uh, Ms. Owens? Can I ask you a question? Um, okay. I was trying to perform on, 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 I'm not understanding what you're saying. So they don't want us to, I'm not going to do this, but they don't want us to. T C P two, three. Yeah?
Okay. Oh, little action.
That's alright.
Hey, man. Yeah, good.
They watch you.
Yeah. Get everybody give them to you.
I'm actually asking.
Get everybody give it.
And I don't mind, because I know when I give it, it's mine. Yeah, yeah, he's giving it to us. Almost.
What's up?
What's going on?
I can't do this, I'm all the way to the couch. Oh, I can make a square pizza.
Is there anybody here?
He's in there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
How you doing?
Need a.
Oh, I think I already filled that out.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Actually, it was. It's pretty busy.
I've been calling, I did say. Yeah, February. So we just already got my long year. We turned it here. I have.
Not far.
Good to you?
Yeah. I'm the ball of the game. They were all with me. Yes. No, no.
Hopefully, that's not going to be an issue.
All the guys there telling the line. Each one checking most.
Yeah, I'm just going to bring these, and I'm going to play it great. Put it on something.
Nice to meet you, sir.
What's going on?
Just, just going, uh, just kind of.
So.
Man, I think it's gonna. Okay, three, three, three.
Second, maybe later.
Sound, you know, let you type away on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm bringing.
Doing alright?
I'm good, I look good, good.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it, thank you. Hit you. Think I would.
You're welcome.
I never lost it, I just hit it. And I tell her on the wire.
You anywhere by Texas City? I was about to go into their meeting and shit, their city council meeting, and I noticed there's a much larger influx of police over here today. Five, yeah. Alright. Yeah.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Yeah.
He's like, huh.
Your favorite daughter, I think, here. And forever, I will miss it.
She's a happy shake.
She's a proud wife.
Oh, yeah.
My eyes, so I don't have my glasses on, so it's too many to take off. Hi, guys. They're getting so big. And you're playing baseball. And you're doing cheer. That's awesome, I'm so proud of y'all. Wow. I'm super proud of y'all. It matches me. He's moving us down here.
You're going to break it off.
Give them some. You're not in way.
You're not in way.
How you get the red deck so bright?
It's great over here. It's hard to do this for everybody to get those. Woo.
I really have to.
Three.
I'd like to miss him.
No, thank you. How are you, sir?
Tired.
How are you doing?
Yeah. Which oriented?
Nope.
Been a long day. I filled up this morning, I haven't ever taken gas left.
Did you drive decently?
I did. I have a, I have a Mercedes G O D, which gets thirty miles per gallon.
This one I think you love. Have a trip for four to five.
I've, no, I've been in here.
I feel so much easier. Prosecution. What did you learn today? You're mad at me? Prosecution.
I'm sorry?
Well, if you got, well, Josh, I can't do it. Build a talk over. Talk over, I decided.
Have a good day.
Is there something to spend?
Yes, sir, they're, they're gonna. There's a plaque that they're gonna present to our municipal heads, reference to a job that he did. Everybody's pretty excited about it.
It's nice to.
Yes, sir.
Huge influx of long-term residents.
Yeah.
Unlike last year.
Yeah, no, it's, it's for the, the present, presentation on that.
And if you know it's for what?
Check it.
Uh, for what?
You should work that. I haven't even looked at this video that you're. Oh, yeah. This should probably be someone to talk. You must have stood this. Shit, turn on.
I guess.
Yeah, I know it's your show. How are you, sir?
I'm good.
Alright. I'll probably get to the proposal for your list.
Yeah, so here's what I've done before. You watched it, you walk out the house now. You're in charge of this, we start. That's the box that goes back in. And I'm the second, my car doesn't mess up, it's what I'm doing. She's sure of what I'm doing. They're running. I didn't. I didn't. It's like crap, so I don't spend enough money. You're in charge. They have. They're really good. There is that. But I am the most scared. That everything is all perfect. That. Or she's not. Thank you. There.
We can't let you.
You're trying to. Okay, I'm making it.
I'm listening. I'm glad. I think. We're not supposed to.
And we.
I think.
Great, great. If we, if we have a time.
Congratulations.
Hi, where you at? So. How was your drive? About, you don't have to call it big enough. Oh, no, bro. That part was. How are you? It's good to see that. What you see, makes me feel strong, made you. Three hours. Good. How are you? Let anybody else get down. You can pull a chair, you can pull a chair, you can pull that. So. Time. He's like, I can't, I can't. So you taking it on? I do. Just so. Do you believe the Michigan? John, it's the best. John is to be the boss of the. I have the rejected.
Nope.
They gave me one first, they kicked my ass last. And this is my reason, I don't need time. This is Mr. Grant.
What's your name?
I don't have any.
Welcome, how are you all?
This is Mr. Ray. I said we got a chance to meet you. What is it? Where's you? Justice, um.
Yeah, I don't say it's.
Yeah. I was just going to say. I just. I was. Also, the bin, let nervous.
Check out the. I'm having the money.
Y'all have the old in the. All over here. Yes, every last. Are you driving? My safety. Yeah, I don't know. Every stage of the law.
After all, this is yours. Thank you so very much for your attendance, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we're going to begin this feeding with roll calls, runs of, uh, my part right. District one.
You have to knock some, district one.
Felix, we're in district two.
Mr. Johnson, mayor.
April garlic, commissioner large.
Dorian K. Jones, pointer, district three.
Jeremy Clark, district four.
And we have director reflect, if you have six of the seventh commission. President form has been established. And we will, uh, now have our invocation today with us. We have Pastor Angelo Mahoney of Mount Zion Baptist Church. Pastor Mahoney, you can come up here and then we'll follow that with Commissioner Knox, and he will lead us in the pledge to the American of Texas flag.
This is right here. Hold on, once again, we come thanking you. Allow us to gather together. Now, Lord, as we come together to make this city better, in a great city, we ask you to be in the midst. Watch over the mayor. Watch over his staff, watch over these commissioners. Watch over your police chief, watch over the fire chief in this entire community. Help us to learn how to work as one, as we serve you as one. These are minimal blessings in your son, Jesus Christ's name. It is all say. Amen.
This is all the way.
I declare allegiance to the fact of the United States of America, and to the republic for its change, a one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
God Texas flag.
I'm on the Texas flag. I declare allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you, Pastor Mahoney, if there's, uh, if there's anything you'd like to share with the citizens of Texas City about what's going on at Mount Zion Baptist Church, you can have a word to say.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we at Mount Zion Baptist Church have begun to be a community-oriented church and trying to do the best we can to change lives. I'm a boy from Louisiana, so I got to learn this Texas flag. So, I just want you to know that, uh, if there's anything that's in our community for us and close to Mount Zion, just feel free. Someone is at the church every day. If there's anything that you need me to do or want to talk to me about, feel free to come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are at the point of proclamations and presentations, and we do have just a few to share with you all today. Uh, first, I'm going to take this a little bit out of point, I will come back to say one of the last. We'll start with designating April tenth through fourteenth, uh, next week as Community Development Week. And, uh, I wanted to present this proclamation as well as another one that we have. I'm going to read two, because they're both going to the same person. Uh, not only is next week Community Development Week, but the month of April is being deemed as Fair Housing Month. Uh, so we want to present both of those proclamations, and I will read them, and then I will have Ms. Smith come forward. She is, uh, not only our grants manager here, but she's our community, uh, program coordinator in community development. So, whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has operated since nineteen seventy-four to provide local governments with the resources required to primarily meet the needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program is among the few remaining federal programs available to address the needs of low and moderate income persons in small cities. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided the city of Texas City with important and flexible assistance to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents of small cities by funding sewer, water, and street improvement projects, economic development projects, and other public improvement projects. Whereas Congress and the nation acknowledge the critical value of Community Development Block Grant Programs and the significant programs that rely on its funds for support. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Texas City, Texas, does hereby declare the week of April tenth through fourteen, two thousand twenty-three, as Community Development Block Grant Program Week. And we urge all citizens of this community to become aware of and support the Community Development Block Grant Program. In testimony where I witness my hand and the seal of Texas City on this fifth day of April, two thousand twenty-three, signed by myself and attested by the city secretary, Ms. Marry Lee. I want to present this to Ms. T T Smith, that you could come on up and receive this proclamation. We are very thankful to you. For the community program. Also, uh, while we have you up here, you can stay here, we have another proclamation presenting this, uh, meaning the month of April as Fair Housing Month. This is a part of, uh, housing, urban developments, and community development programs, uh, requirement as it relates to Fair Housing Month. They share the tenants and support those tenants of what we stand for by way of fair housing. The proclamation reads, whereas the Fair Housing Act enabled, enacted in April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, it enshrined its federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, or color, or religion, or sex, or gender status, national origin, and disability. And commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas Texas City is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. Our social fact, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse and inclusive communities. And whereas more than fifty years after the passage of Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. So therefore, be it resolved that the city of Texas City does hereby declare the month of April, two thousand twenty-three, Fair Housing Month, and to hereby urge all citizens of this locality to become aware of and support the Fair Housing Law. In testimony where I witness the hand and the seal of the city of Texas City on this fifth day, once again, signed by myself as mayor, all the city commissioners, and Marry Lee's city secretary. This also goes to Ms. T T Smith. Thank you very much. Could you stop here and say something on your, on the way down here? Uh, T T Smith has been working on Community Development Department, uh, with Mr. George Fuller, uh, for quite some time. She's been very instrumental in not only administering, uh, some of the, uh, community development, Ms. Smith, you can come up to.
She's feeling like she ain't the lady.
Uh, Community Development Block Grant, uh, funding, uh, working under the, uh, direction of, once again, uh, Mr. Fuller, and, uh, housing and urban development regulations, and, and so much more that she does here in the city of Texas City. And I just want her to have a few words relative to those proclamations.
I was really trying to sneak by. I just want to say thank you to the city of Texas City, to Mayor Johnson, commissioners, and to Mr. Fuller and Mr. Branson for allowing me to do this work for the people. And I hope that I'm able to do much more in the future, in the near future, actually. Um, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, now we will have a special presentation, uh, to our court clerk, relative to the Court Clerk Certification Program and presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Pat Riffel, I'm the Court Administrator for the city of Friendswood. But I've come here today as a Chair of the Texas State Court Clerks Education Committee. Um, we're here for a very special purpose today, for a very special person. Uh, as you can see, the back of your galley is very full. And those are people who are here to support Tammy Odom, uh, your court clerk who is about to receive her Level Three Court Clerk Certification. First, I'm going to tell you a little bit about that program. The program's over twenty-five years old, there's more than four hundred thou- or four thousand court clerks in the state of Texas, but only a hundred and thirty-one have achieved the level of Court Clerk Three. Tammy is the latest in that endeavor. She's been extremely persistent and dedicated and her gumption and her wherewithal have helped her get through this program like nobody I've ever seen. Um, as the Chair, I usually get to assign these tasks to someone else, but I took this one. And I took this one because I can't imagine letting anybody else do this. I've been working with Tammy for over twenty years and not just for the Texas Court Clerks Association and the clerks around the court, but for the city of Texas City, for your local people. Um, Tammy has been the President of our association, she's been the Chair of the Audit Committee, the Chair of the Vendor Committee, the Chair of the Conference Committee, and she currently serves as our Audit Chair. Uh, often Tammy will say, when can I be Delegate Tammy? And it's like, you will never just be Delegate Tammy. You belong to us and we will use your amazing strengths to do anything that we need you to do without hesitation. But Tammy doesn't just give to the Court Clerks Association. Here in Texas City, Tammy is, um, very involved in your city. She is the Secretary of the local, um, Crime Stoppers Organization. She's on the, uh, Diversity Ethics and Inclusion Committee. She was also, uh, indicated as the two thousand and twenty-two civilian employee by the, of the year by the Police Department. And those of you who work in the court profession, there's about eight of us here, know that's a huge deal when your police department and your courts have that type of relationship and can make you their Person of the Year. We were all very impressed, knowing that's probably an honor most of us will never receive. So, um, I just want to say that I have never, in my years of doing this, met someone as dedicated who puts as much into not just the state, but the city and her family and her friends. And y'all are so very lucky to have her. So, it's with that honor that I present Madam one thirty-one, as we now call her, with her Court Clerk Certification.
This is a pretty big certificate. That is, that is quite an honor and we're very grateful to have, um, Ms. Odom working with us here in the city of Texas City. And, uh, thank you Judge Gumpel and all the staff and support, police department and the courts who have come to support, um, Ms. Odom receiving this award. It's, 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 uh, it's an honor to, uh, not only receive it, but to have her working with us. Did, did you have some words you'd like to share about anything or recognize anyone of his own, you can just.
May I ask, may I do that?
Absolutely.
I do it for my camera.
You may.
Um, so I would like to recognize a few special people. My parents, Judy and Queston King, they drove from Sydney, um, Buffalo. Uh, my husband Larry, who has the hardest job in the world, he has to be married to me. My, uh, my son and daughter-in-law, Brittany, um, their daughter, Ray.
Enter your beauty.
My daughter Abby and son-in-law Colton, and my grandbabies, uh, Kylie and Jamison. Um, I have more kids than on here, they're six altogether. Um, I really want to thank my city family, um, I could not have done this without you. When she said I was persistent, she was trying to be nice, it took me twenty years. It's slow or special, I don't, I don't know, but I finally got there. My court clerks, I, I could not do what I do without them. My judge, thank you Judge for being here.
Say hello to that.
And I want to recognize my TCCA family, not just Pat, um, my prosecutor, Robert, I can't forget about him. He's, somehow I tell him he's my favorite clerk, he just doesn't want to tell it to.
Um. So do I.
That's why you're my favorite judge. But I want to recognize some people from TCCA that are here. Uh, Jennifer Buzoryrea is the, uh, Court Administrator for the city of Irving. She is also Vice President of TCCA, she drove down here in the rain to be a awesome city. And she brought her sidekick, Shelley Masters, sent her, uh, by name in the, Listermore, we even dressed the same. Um, Julie Kabetka is retired Court Administrator from the city of Alvin, and she's here with us. Courtney Broussard is Court Administrator for the city of La Porte. And, um, this, this is my crowd, and I appreciate them very much being here. And thank you Mayor for a few minutes, or a few months, so.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
And we're going to leave with this.
Absolutely. Thank you all for traveling, especially those of you who come from swinging, we know we've got some bad weather ahead of us, but, uh, good to see you Bulldogs in the house tonight.
And I can't forget my marshals.
Absolutely, marshals, thank you, thank you gentlemen. So as we prepare to move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda, we're up to our reports. We will have a report on final utilization and staffing study from Matrix Consulting Group, Matrix Consulting Group. Um, we have them, um, kind of paging in with us via Zoom. They were hired by the city of Texas City to work with Chief Joe Stanton at the Texas City Police Department. And, uh, and they have a few, uh, recommendations they'd like to, uh, report on. Mr. Brady, can you hear us, city of Texas City? How much works in practice? Uh, while we're getting that situated, uh, Chief Stanton, could you come up and just tell us a little bit about, uh, what we did as far as soliciting the assistance of, uh, Matrix Consulting Group and, and some of the things that they may have assisted you with? And Marry, let us know whenever we're passionate.
Yes, sir. What we did was back in May of two thousand twenty-two, I went to the mayor and, uh, proposed to him to do a study of the police department from top down, sideways, the, the absolute wildfire, uh, operations, from, uh, management to, uh, the way we, uh, deploy officers. And what we tasked, uh, Matrix Consulting with was to give us an overview and give us a, a, a study to take us into the next ten years. The last time we did a study like this was in nineteen ninety-six, and we really got a lot of good use out of it. So the, they, they completed the, uh, study and they got some really good recommendations for us to consider. Uh, with this, Mr. Brady is here to kind of give us an overview of that study and give us an idea of, uh, the direction he feels like, as a consultant, that we, the police department, need to go. Is he good to go, Marry?
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now.
And, and this is Mr. Richard Brady, a veteran of Matrix Consulting.
Thank you very much, uh, am I allowed to share my screen? They have a, a PowerPoint presentation. Eric, do you see them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Uh, again, uh, I'm Richard Brady, I'm the President of Matrix Consulting Group, and I'm glad our team of consultants that worked with, uh, the police department, um, on this study over the last few months. Um, just by a quick way of introduction, um, our firm is in its twentieth year. We provide a lot of services to our local government clients, thousands of them. But, uh, our largest area is in the area of law enforcement consulting, if you want, with over four hundred police departments around the country, a few in Canada, but many in Texas. Um, as you'll see when you review the report and, um, open this presentation here this evening, uh, our approach is tech-based, uh, extensive use of data analytics, but also putting a lot of employees, but we did that in surveys and onsite ride-alongs and many, many other interviews. Um, the report shows the results of that, uh, tech finding and, uh, we have made a number of recommendations, which I'd like to summarize for you this evening. Uh, but all of these have an implementation plan associated with it. Uh, so first, uh, the study objectives, and Chief may have mentioned this in his introduction. It's pretty simple, it's to, um, look at current operations and understand how Texas City's police department operates and what's unique about it, which is indeed in many ways. Uh, but based on workloads and the service needs, uh, and the needs to evaluate current staffing needs uh, in an effective operations management, uh, context. We were asked specifically to do two things besides looking at staff, uh, current staffing. And one is looking at the beat structure, uh, and to, uh, evaluate how effective it is in terms of, uh, how consistent uh, workloads and proactive capabilities are, uh, throughout the city. Uh, but to come up where necessary with an alternative deployment plan to achieve that consistency. And we also provided a model, uh, with projections to show, uh, based on, as we understand, that the city of Texas City is going to be growing in a number of different ways, the number of staff that you're going to need over the next ten years. So first of all, with patrol, um, you'll see in the report, an extensive call for services analysis. It was really important for us to understand reactive workload first, because you, the services you've got to provide with the community, how it expenses. But, um, while that defines, uh, certain levels of service that that relates to response time and is defining how patrol officers are spending their time, what we're going to get to with this is proactivity, the single most important indicator of the effectiveness of personnel assigned patrol. So you can see here that the, uh, police department responds to almost thirty thousand calls for service a year. Um, and we laid out in this slash chart here, what the top ten calls for service are. And as you can see, they're mostly quality of life and some minor crime types of things, which are not dissimilar from, uh, other communities up outside, even with, uh, large industrial complexes and more expensive like used guide. Um, just to mention an important indicator of the reactor, kind of what's under response times. So we looked at response times to the various levels of, uh, calls for service that are out there by priority. Uh, Priority One are the highest priority call. And five point three minutes on average, that is, uh, um, within targets of your own, uh, but also common for most communities around the country. And that's the last time you want to call, because it's in the dispatch center, to some near right end scene. Uh, but I think what's notable here in Texas City is that even the lowest of lower and lowest, uh, priority calls for service have an exceptional response time. Uh, ten minutes is exceptional when measured against many of our clients, which can be an hour or more. So, uh, Priority One would be in progress typically if somebody, uh, often a violent crime. Um, Priority Two could be an urgent call, they may not be in progress, uh, but usually a minor and non-violent crime. Uh, Priority Three is a medium service call, associated with, again, that quality of life and maybe cold calls and misdemeanor types of calls. So for an honor of a Texas call, uh, that is an important indicator of patrol staff, that I can say. Because where we went to with this analysis was to look at, uh, current proactive capability. Proactivity is important in patrol because if you spend all your time responding to calls for service, you'd be doing nothing to, uh, work with the community on root causes of crime, uh, about problem solving, about looking for trends and patterns. And, uh, many of our clients don't have much proactive time at all. Texas City has adequate amount, amounts of proactive time, uh, every day of the week and every, uh, hour of, uh, the, the, uh, the day. Uh, typically we target for our communities, uh, an effective range of at least forty to fifty percent of proactivity, uh, to, uh, to be effective and to work with the community in a variety of ways. And there's no time block throughout the, the week where that doesn't occur, it's a sixty-two percent overall, which is, um, which is very good. Um, I think for us, this provided an important indicator of an alternative that the city should consider about alternative uses of patrol personnel, uh, and, and so you start growing sufficiently to be able to, uh, absorb patrol staff's ability to be involved in these workloads. I'll get back to that in a minute, but before I do that, I wanted to talk about the beat design. What this map shows here are for the eight beats that you've got right now, and there are various workloads, um, the distribution of those workloads compared to the average in the city. And when you're, uh, the blue shade, you're twenty to forty percent or more below the average for the city in terms of workload. And when you're pink or coral or red, you're twenty to forty percent or more above the average. So I think the takeaway from this is that there's great variation, great inequity in workload among the beats in the city. So we used our, uh, GIS analysis and our analysis of all the calls for service that Jay handled to redesign the beat, change the boundaries and reallocate workload as a result, to result in something that's, uh, more equal. Uh, these, this beat configuration is, it shows that most reporting areas are at or below the average. Uh, same eight-beat kind of structure, but with different kinds of boundaries. So in, in order to be able to do that, there would have to be some work that would involve emergency communications and information technology to redesign reporting areas to achieve this, but you can do it with the same number of personnel you need right now because, uh, it's the same eight-beat structure. So getting back to recommendations on patrol, you could provide an exceptional level of service, uh, with fewer people than you've got right now. You've got fifty-one people assigned, uh, police officers assigned at patrol right now. And you could achieve a, a proactivity rate of fifty-five percent with forty-three personnel. And we recommend that you do that and reassign the eight people from the difference of eight people from patrol to create a more robust traffic enforcement function. Uh, right now, most of your people are, uh, your operations people are strictly speaking in patrol. And, uh, by reallocating people, you can have more staff dedicated to proactive enforcement, to accidents and accident investigations, and which would, uh, have great benefit, uh, to the community. Moving on to investigations, uh, the first thing that we looked at was, uh, the incidence of, uh, major crime, of crime in general. But, uh, major crime, as is reported to the Department of Justice every year, and the FBI defines seven major crimes, homicide, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, larceny, burglary, motor vehicle theft. And we looked at those and, uh, consistent with most communities around the country, there's been a decline in property crime, uh, that has continued over twenty years in the last five years. Uh, person crime is down to, uh, not nearly as much, uh, although it would have been as much if there wasn't an uptick in, uh, twenty twenty-one, last year, it was fifty-four. And that too is consistent with most communities we work with. But it's not as much as it was in twenty seventeen and nowhere near what it was, uh, ten or twenty years ago. So we looked at caseloads, so in spite of major crime, things, things are declining over the last few years. So in spite of major crime, things, they were declining over the last year, few years. Uh, caseloads are relatively high, and there's some reasons for that. Most notably, cases take a lot longer today. There's a lot more documentary evidence to go through, cell phone video and other video and other, um, uh, evidence that needs to go through, and that takes time. So caseloads are rather high for both line detectives as well as for supervisors. So we've recommended the addition of two detective positions and two police position. But those aren't new positions. Those would be reassigned from, uh, a civilian identification division, which I'll talk about in a second. Uh, important within this is that, um, more effective and more stringent case review and case management practices need to be in place in investigations uh, to make sure that the cases that detectives have assigned have the potential to go somewhere, that detectives aren't spending their time on cases which should stay in patrol, and, uh, that cases keep moving. So more effective case management systems need to be implemented. In identification, we made the recommendation to civilianize that, uh, that function. It's something which is done in Texas and across the United States and countries and possibly thousands of communities, uh, across the country. It's something that, uh, you should do, uh, as well. So that would create four new, uh, civilian positions and one supervisor position when the existing personnel reassigned. In administration, we've made the recommendation to increase training for officers uh, and also to enhance recruitment efforts. Um, this is a problem less so in Texas City than in most of our clients, but recruitment and retention of officers is a nationwide problem, and you don't want it to be a problem here. So we, uh, recommended that you really focus on what re, the recruitment staff are, is doing and are doing uh, to make sure that they're enhancing their recruitment and retention progress, which is also and reassigning some of them as a result. Eversy Communications is one of the greatest needs within the department. It's an area with, um, high turnover, and that's consistent with the experience throughout the United States. The national average for turnover of dispatchers is between twenty and thirty percent a year. So you need that, add more staff, one supervisor, two lead, two communicators. But, uh, you need to develop, uh, recruitment and retention strategies to enhance that function in the future because it is very difficult. Um, certainly, the holding facility is understaffed, and if it's understaffed, uh, in order to be safe, you need two people on duty, uh, on the rapid block. And you don't have enough staff to be able to do that right now. So with four additional police, four additional general positions, uh, you would be able to have two arriving blocks without excessive use. Lastly, we, we looked at growth in the city, and we worked with, uh, your planning staff to understand the type of growth that's going to happen in the, uh, community over the next ten years, the type of growth that's going to be forecasted, where it's going to occur, because that's going to be important for patrol. And, uh, so we did that, and that's portrayed on the right, on the top half. Uh, but we reallocated that stack by, um, some ones in the city and some ones on two. Uh, but then we, uh, projected calls for service based on isolating, uh, the type of workload of calls for service and crime that would result in different kinds of growth in police workload. For example, less for residential, uh, development, more for other kinds of development, and taking into consideration non-population-based kind of growth and the impact that has on the police department. So the, the population will change over ten years by about forty-five percent, but calls for service will grow about thirty-seven percent in crime and non-shelter care about the same. Thirty-five, thirty-seven percent. But at that level, uh, growth in workload, like growth in workload and resulting growth in staffing will be pretty significant over the next ten years. Uh, we estimate that the police department staffing needs will grow by twenty-one smart positions and eight non-smarter civilian positions. Most of the smart positions would be in patrol, eighteen of the twenty-one. Uh, most of the civilian positions would be in, uh, Eversy Communications or Dispatch. Altogether, uh, that's, uh, twenty-nine additional positions that. So I went through a lot of material, uh, pretty fast. Um, I'll turn it over to questions. So, um, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to give you this very rapid summary of our, our project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. Uh, we appreciate the work that you and Matrix Consulting Group has done for us in the city of Texas City. Um, our, our police department is very excited to take some of these recommendations, and we will, uh, review them internally and act on those that we can. And, uh, again, we thank you. You big up Chief? Thanks, sir. Uh, our management report.
Good thoughts.
We will have is a report from our Recreation and Tourism Program. Uh, we will have Mr. Colbest to give us that report. This is probably one of the busiest departments in the city.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Commission. Thank you so much for having me here. I am very excited to talk about all of the programs we do. Uh, we do so many programs, it was hard to convince it all into one PowerPoint. So what I did is break it down by seasons. So since we're in spring, let's start with spring. All right, so, ooh. Here we go. All right, so our St. Patrick's. There we go. Our St. Patrick's Day Parade is held the Saturday before St. Patrick's Day. It also coincides with the opening day of Little League and the football. Next. Sorry. Yes, okay. Uh, next, our spring break camp is from seven-thirty a.m. until five p.m. Monday through Friday. The camp went on three field trips this year, and we collaborated with the fire department and with the police department for them to come and visit camp. We are currently hosting our twenty-third annual art festival. The opening night runs this past Saturday, April the first. Festival runs Saturday through Wednesday, and each night at the show, we have a Texas City ISD student perform. We are host, um, we have had the most art entered in this show with four hundred and six adult art pieces and four hundred and four youth art pieces. Tonight is the last night of the show, so be sure to stop by after city commission. It's open until eight. Uh, next, our Easter egg hunt is held at Carlos Garza Park the Wednesday before Easter. We have egg hunts for different age, age groups. We give out prizes for golden eggs. We also have pictures with the Easter Bunny, face painting, and carnival games. We moved the egg hunt tonight to the Nestler Center because of the bad weather predictions. We will be passing out bags with candy-filled eggs. We have face painters, pictures with the Easter Bunny, balloon twisters, and hot dogs for bike ride jacksies. Next, our Zupa de Mayo, um, event is held the Saturday before May fifth. We hold a parade in the morning followed by a festival in the park. We collaborate with the Texas City LULAC organization who oversees the festival in the park. All right, so moving on to summer. One of our biggest programs we run for the summer is our summer camp. Summer camp is held at the Nestler Center, Lowry Center, and Harbor Center. We have eight week-long sessions for six to twelve-year-olds. Um, the camp runs from seven-thirty to five-thirty, Monday through Friday. We collaborate with the Texas City ISD Nutrition Department, who provides breakfast and lunch for the campers. The food program is also available for anyone in the community under the age of eighteen. This year, we will not be hosting camp at the Sanders Center. However, we have increased the number of campers at the Lowry Center and Nestler Center to accommodate there not being a camp at Sanders Center. We will be repurposing the use of the Sanders Center for the summer. All right, so during the summer, at the Sanders Center, we will be hosting the food program. Um, we will have the activity room available, open gym for basketball, volleyball, and pickleball. We will have a structured programming for young adults. Our goal for the summer is to target recreative youth of the age of thirteen through seventeen. All right, next is our Nestler Family Aquatic Center. Um, we had our private party reservations take place this past Monday. We had forty days available to reserve, and we were sold out by eight fifteen a.m. We are, uh, we are officially open for weekends, the first Saturday in May, and weekdays starting May the thirtieth. We've hired all of our outdoor guards, and we will commence with live fire training next weekend. All right, other summer special events we have, we have our Kid Fish at Harbor Park, a great lineup for our Juneteenth celebration, which includes the Gospel Fest, Night of Painting, Golf Tournament, Poetry Slam, and Parade and Celebration in the Park. Our Friday night movies, we have two here at Nestler Center. And then this year, we're going to have a movie at Harbor Park. We have two concerts in the park at Bay Street Park. And then our Independence Day celebration on July fourth with a parade in the morning, followed by a band at Bay Street Park and fireworks setting. All right, so now to our autumn and winter special events. Our annual breast cancer walk is always held the first Saturday in October. This is an event where the community can come together to honor those who have fought, who are fighting, or who have lost their lives, um, to breast cancer. Our annual Halloween festival takes place the Saturday before Halloween. We have carnival games, moonwalks, and costume contests. This is one of our largest and best attended events of the year. The Texas City Christmas parade is also one of our biggest event, our biggest parades of the year. The parade starts at Nestler Park and ends at the Shablo Pavilion. At the end of the parade, we have award ceremonies and hand out trophies for winners in each category. The Snow Spectacular is the second Saturday in December. We set up snow slides, snow play areas, pictures with Santa, and have holiday vendors. Last year, we had over three thousand people attend throughout the day. Our Mardi Gras parade is scheduled around Mardi Gras each year, and we collaborate with the Texas City Rotary Club to host this parade. The Father Daughter Dance is held the Friday before Valentine's Day. This is a night of dance and entertainment where fathers can spoil the daughters. We pre-sell tickets for the event, and the, um, and the price of the ticket includes dinner, memory photo, and souvenir for girls. And that's all I have.
Misses, do you have any questions on this?
Do you have, uh, copy of this, all this information that you just presented?
Yes, it's on our website, and I can, I can give you a copy. I can get your information afterward.
I appreciate it.
In the calendar, yes.
Yeah, we do have city calendars out front. Also, uh, you can pick those up at any time. If you, if you don't get one tonight, you can definitely get one between eight and five here at City Hall. Uh, lots of activities in our Recreation and Tourism Department, and we're very thankful to you and the staff that, uh, kind of work with, uh, all the different, um, seasons and programs that we have. This is absolutely one of the, um, best things that we use to say, uh, Texas City is a great place to live, work, and play. So thank you, Miss Nicole.
Thank you.
Uh, so that does it for reports. We are now up to our public comments section of, of the meeting. I have a couple of people who have requested to address the commission. First, we have Ms. Irma Allen. Ms. Irma Allen is going to come on up. Ms. Allen, you can speak at the podium here, building on the corner of Park and Westwood. Uh, she has some concerns relative to that. Uh, remember, everybody who addresses the commission and speaks with us, you come and give your name, and then, uh, you have three minutes, up to three minutes to speak. And, uh, it's not necessarily an action item for us to take and, and collaborate on, but you can address it first.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Thank you for taking my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Years ago, they said it was going to be a substation, police substation on Carver and Westwood. It's not there yet. Is it going to be one or what?
Okay, the, the, I can answer that. It's a simple question. The police, uh, substation that we have, we're actually in the process of building a brand-new one over on the west side of forty-five. We do have a police substation currently in the, um, mainland city center area. But that building you're speaking of is a multi-use facility. It's a community park building, and it's actually in the process of being restored for various community uses. But, uh, police substation won't necessarily be one of them.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, we have Dr. Jerry, is it Flagler?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Dr. Jerry Flagler of the College of the Mainland is going to speak to us about the upcoming bond information. Thank you, Mr. Flagler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, staff, citizens of Texas City. I'm Dr. Jerry Flagler. I'm the Vice President for Instruction at College of the Mainland, and I'm here to provide both an update and a report of things going forward. Uh, we recently just completed the, uh, last building project from our twenty-eighteen bond. In twenty-fifteen, we did an academic master plan, and we did a facilities master plan looking at what we needed to do at College of the Mainland to address the needs of our community. Uh, we've completed the construction of administration building. We've completed the instruction, a construction of a steam building, of an industrial careers building, and a comm PD department. We've also done renovation of some spaces and improved overall campus environment. Now, that was phase one. Phase two is the next bond. And in that bond, we are looking at going forward and remodeling those things that we can remodel, renovate what we can renovate, and build construction for what we can construct. Specifics that are available on the website, combondtwentytwentythree.com. But in a nutshell, uh, the reason for this is, as we entered into our first bond, we hired demographer to do a study of where Texas City was growing, where Galveston County was growing, and what we could expect at comm. We've worked off four projections from the demographer on where we would be at for enrollment. We've exceeded all of those projections. Uh, so we've got a good problem. Uh, we've run out of space already. Our last bond, we built shell space in buildings so that we would have room to expand. We've already built out that space and filled it up. Our enrollment is at record levels. We just completed a new academic master plan looking at what's needed over the next five years. And in that study, one of the things that we found was in this region, we have five major employment sectors. Transportation hospitality, or transportation logistics, hospitality management, aviation, aerospace, uh, allied health, and then we're looking at petrochemicals. We currently serve two of those five sectors. That means sixty percent of the jobs that are available in the Gulf Coast region, comm is not able to address, which means our citizens either don't have access to those jobs or they're going someplace else to get that training and run the risk of not coming back. So this bond is focused on continuing what we've already begun. It's focused on providing access to our citizens so that they can have economic independence in Galveston County. I know a lot of you are saying, how much is this going to cost? The answer is two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. There's no way to slice that. That's not a lot of money. When you look at the valuation of a hundred-thousand-dollar home, that's sixty-three cents a week or just about thirty-three dollars a month. That's, that is, uh, that's what that's going to cost. And I know a lot of people are saying, why do this now? Well, why not now? We're building. We're growing. The county is growing. And, uh, last time I checked, wages and materials weren't going to go down. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Flagler, very much. We appreciate you and, uh, Dr. Warren Niffel for all you're doing with the College of the Mainland, making it one of the best community colleges in the country. Appreciate it.
Dr. Flagler.
Sir.
I have a question. Uh, was that sixty-three cent a week?
Per week, yes, sir.
And thirty-three dollars?
A year.
A year?
Yes, sir.
Say it for one.
Yeah. Based on a hundred-thousand-dollar valuation.
I saw, I saw this live. If you didn't say thirty-three dollars a month, it's thirty dollars a year.
Thirty-three dollars a year, I'm sorry. And for those who are sixty-five or older and have filed the exemptions and have their property taxes frozen, there will not be a tax increase for those citizens.
Thank you so much. Thank you, George, for the last important comment. All right, we're going to move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there was other public.
On the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there was other people who needed to speak that filled out a form.
That's all we have, sir. Thank you very much.
No, there was other, there was two others.
That's all we're acknowledging today.
So you're denying us the, the right to speak? I turned in two forms to make sure I got.
Today, sir. We're not going to disrupt the meeting any longer, but thank you very much.
So you're going to deny the citizens to speak of Texas City?
I don't have any other citizens who have, uh, requested.
I turned in two. One is Mickey Mouse and one is concerned citizen, sir. You should have got it.
So there's no Mickey Mouse speaking here today.
Well, there's a concerned citizen here.
Okay, so that's my last time warning you. I'm going to ask that you remain in the proper decorum for this meeting, and if you can't do that, you'll be asked to leave. Other than that, you're free to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting.
So you're not going to allow me to speak?
Commissioners, you have before you consent agenda items A through E for your consideration. Um, if there's any that you would like pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this hour. Motion to approve consent items A through E, Mayor?
Second.
It has been motioned to approve consent agenda items A through E by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Herrera. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're down to our regular items eight. A, consider and take action on ordinance number two-zero-two-three-dash-zero-eight. A medium to two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year budget to account for a police department grant to purchase ballistic shields. Finance department?
Yes, sir. We're, uh, going to be increasing the revenue for the cost of ballistic shields. Yes, sir. We're going to be increasing the grant revenue for the cost of ballistic shields and increasing the equipment.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Ryan?
I'm going to approve.
I started again.
It's been moved to approve this budget amendment by Commissioner Pointer, seconded by Commissioner Herrera. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item eight B, consider and take action on ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero nine. Amending the code of ordinances, Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one eighteen, Amusements and Entertainments. Commissioners, this is just an item where we will amend our current ordinance to kind of clean up some language. Right now, we have this particular section that kind of addresses the gaming ordinance that we have in coalitions of certain gaming machines. But there are some allowances that we want to, to make that are caught in this loophole, if you will. There's a particular type of machine that addresses kind of like a jukebox playing some music of local talent. We don't want that to be caught in the whole definition of gaming machine. So this addresses us being able to clean that up.
So guys, you see that? Texas City does not care about transparency, nor do they care about police accountability because that's what I actually put on my paperwork that I wanted to discuss. This is the second time, second time that I've come to a city council meeting and they have denied me the right to talk. The second time, folks. So, you know, look, as we say in everything, you know, you have the right to readdress your government and everything. You know, I highly encourage everybody and everything to do so because Texas City has a lot to hide. They've got a lot to hide. I mean, they're now even, you know, scared to talk to the man with the camera and all that. And I have multiple videos, mind you, of individuals acting out stupid and crazy. One being this gentleman right here at the door, okay, last time I came, okay? This guy here wanted to get Malde and Lippy with me, one of their marshals, okay? The, the city of Texas City is obviously not about transparency. I came down here, I put a public information request in, their city secretary treated me like crap. I then didn't even get but half of the information that I requested. When it was brought to their attention, I said I would be back today for this meeting. And I specifically stated that I would be addressed and I would put down on the paperwork because they want us to fill out some form and I tried to explain to them that our constitutional right, we don't have to identify ourselves and everything to speak before a city council. So just to appease them, I filled out their little paper, okay? And I put Mickey Mouse on it, on one. The other one, I put concerned citizen, okay? And as you just saw, they refused to call either one. They called everybody else, but they did not call me.
They did apologize that they didn't have a speech today, but they were not letting those people speak.
Correct. So what are they hiding down here in Texas City? How corrupt are they? Okay, if this isn't corruption and just people scared at its finest, I don't know. I don't know who's more scared now, if it's the mayor himself or if it was Officer Penada, the little scaredy cat in his own little police department that y'all saw, okay? Obviously, the mayor is even more scary than you. So... What's your name and badge number, sir? No comment? It's not your policy to identify to the public? Wow, look at this. Look, look at this tyranny. Sir, is it not against your policy to identify to the public? What do y'all got to hide down here in Texas City? This is ridiculous. Absolutely positively ridiculous. Let's see if this jack waddle will, will identify. You going to be professional, identify yourself?
Sure. Officer Chapa, Texas City Police.
And your badge number?
Eighteen sixty-four. And what is your name?
Uh, Concerned Citizen. How about you, brother?
Officer Allen, Texas City Marshals Office, eight two 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 eight. It's my badge.
Appreciate it. At least y'all are being a lot more professional this time than like that, than you do that just walked out the door.
Have a stuff a good day, sir.
And everything, you know, I know you wasn't very professional last time, but I appreciate you at least trying this time.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
We need to do something about this. Citizens have the right to readdress their government and everything, okay? And I'm here to readdress my government. They won't even allow me the chance to talk. Why is that? Is it because I got a camera in my hand? Is that discrimination?
I can't speak for anybody, sir.
I think that's discrimination against the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. Okay, that's, that's big time lawsuits here.
Okay, at the end of the day, you do what you got to do.
I, I definitely will, sir. Most definitely.
I want you to keep it down, but you're still having.
I don't give a crap what they're having in there because I had the right to talk and they wouldn't allow me.
Because they're having a meeting, we need to keep it down, okay? That's all I'm asking.
I, I don't care. Look.
If not, we'll be more than glad to escort you off the premises.
For what?
Been kindly asked to just keep it down.
For what? This is freedom of speech.
The ones denying your freedom of speech.
This is freedom of speech. If I speak loud, that's, if I speak loud, that's how I talk.
Okay, okay.
Okay? That's how I talk. So, so you're going to discriminate me against me because I speak loud?
Sir, do you know what the word discrimination is?
Obviously, you don't.
No, do you?
Even Texas City themselves don't. They need to learn what it, what it means, all y'all. I have a lot of good stuff that I need to talk to the council about in regards to you guys right there in y'all's clown uniforms. Okay? Acting out and not, you know, following y'all's own policies and procedures. Um, you know, just straight up discriminating against people, beating people down, police brutality.
Part of the chat, I'm talking to the marshal real quick.
Go ahead and talk to him. Y'all got a lot to hide. We're going to figure out what y'all are hiding down here. Smart of my word. Look, look at this yup, yup, yuppie yahoo right here. This is the guy who wants to deny me to speak. Dedrick D. Johnson, senior, mayor. This is the yahoo that doesn't want to let people talk. Okay, and here's all the rest of his cronies. Errol Garza, Abel Garza. Thelma Bowie, Bowie. DeAndre Knoxen. Dorothy Jones. Jamie Clark. Felix Herrera. There's all the cronies of Texas City on the wall. All the cronies underneath this jack waddle right here. Dietrich Johnson. Senior. Oh, God, he's got a junior? Oh, man, we're, we're in a world of hurt. He's got a junior? Man, this, of all people, this yahoo right here didn't need to freaking reproduce. He acts like that and behaves like that to people. Wow.
Not shut down people. I guess we have, when's the next one? Do you know?
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now. So they have one every two weeks?
First and third Wednesday of every month.
So it's not like Galveston where they just have it?
First and, first and third Wednesday of every month at five p.m. This is the second time, folks, that I've been down here to try to speak. They denied me the first time because I didn't fill out the paper. But yet then he gave other people the right to speak and the chance to speak. Um, at the end, he wouldn't allow me to speak. I had my hand raised. I actually have it on film that other citizens recognized that I had my hand up wanting to speak and that he refused me the chance to speak last time.
Well, we have another person coming to the next one.
So now here I am again today. This time, I actually fill out their paperwork that they want and that's still not good enough. So what? They're censoring the, the citizens from coming, coming down here and redressing their government. That's all it is.
Does anybody, do you happen to know the mayor's number off the top of your head?
I don't. Um, eighteen oh one North, Ninth Avenue North is the address here at Texas City City Hall. Um... So...
I'm sure, I'm sure somebody in the chat can drop that in there.
Right here. Or, well, this is emergency. That's, I think that's their dispatch number.
Yeah, that's the dispatch number. All right, we've got more people to come next time. Um, so, all right, guys, well, we found another one that needs some more. Uh, Concerned Citizen was telling about some of the things he wanted to talk about today. Sitting there. And yeah, so stay tuned, guys. Be apprised that things might be going down. We'll see what happens. Thank you, Oklahoma. Um, other than that, guys, I guess we're going to get out of here. There's nothing left to do today. Uh, shut down through the speech in the city council meeting.
Straight up discriminating. They're discriminating against us because we have cameras. They're discriminating against us, man, because I was talking loud. That's what he was just saying. You're talking too loud. So you shut the damn doors and everything practically. So, you know, you can't sit there and discriminate against me because I talk loud. I said, it's the freedom of speech.
Absolutely. All right, guys, thank you so much. Tune in. I hope you'll have a great day. He'll have it up on his channel sometime within the next week.
Yeah, yeah. Probably before that.
Probably before the next week, so probably before the next, uh, within the next seven days, he should have it up. Uh, if it wasn't that good in there, uh, go subscribe to Concerned Citizen. He is posting videos now and he has, I believe, two?
Three.
Three, three up now. All right, guys, thanks so much and I'll see you on the next one. Peace out, guys.